I'd like to call the Board of Trustees to order. And if we could all stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Uh, roll call.
Maloney.
Here.
Hermilyne, here. Cronin.
Here.
Feeny.
Here.
Hardinger.
Here.
Wyland, here. Zegami.
And he's excused. And now we, I said that wrong too, didn't I? So now we adjourn the board review.
Yep.
Yep. So we need a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion.
Second.
Honorable, second by Hardinger. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Board of review is adjourned. Uh, let's see, we now call an order to Board of Trustees. And roll call by Cherry.
Maloney.
Here.
Hermilyne, here. Cronin.
Here.
Feeny.
Here.
Hardinger.
Here.
Wyland. Zegami, excuse me.
Excuse me. Yep. Uh, public comments. Uh, any public comments? Public comments, no? Anybody on social media over there?
No.
Shake the head or is there no? No?
No.
Okay, just wondering. Uh, one more time, any uh, public comments from uh, anyone? Social media or on the audience, no? Hearing none? Uh, let's see, move on here. Minutes from the previous meetings. Uh, four eighteen twenty-two Board of Trustees meeting.
Motion to approve four eighteen Board meeting, four twenty-six. Special Board meeting, trustee meeting.
Okay. And five two?
Oh.
You want to do all three?
Yes, I'll do all three.
Okay. Motion uh, um, by Hermilyne.
I'll sign it.
Second by Cronin. Any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Uh, reports minutes from boards, committees and commissions. Um, I think we finance, we just need to uh, boy, I miss Lauren huh, sometimes, holy man.
Moves to acknowledge items fourteen, fourteen seventeen eighteen nineteen and twenty.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Feeny, second by Hardinger. Any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Reports from departments, administrator.
I have a short report in the packet. Um, I have been putting materials into a cloud drive or OneDrive, whatever, I mean, you want to name it. Uh, with a link in my report, uh, also for the closed session. Has everybody been able to find those? Have they had any trouble finding them? Okay.
I had a little trouble at first.
Okay. Well, nothing abnormal in any time I'm trying to get on something.
I just, I guess I just want to verify that that's working fine or you want it done somewhat differently. If not, then um, it cuts down on the size of the packet. I think one thing trying to get done is a walkthrough at the Public Safety Building yet. I'm wondering if uh, Josh, Clay and Mark, if you were available sometime next week for that?
Yeah.
To try to just make one last kick at that so we can get this thing off the, off uh, off our plates and, and get specs written and so forth. So I don't know if any days in particular, anybody can tell me are good or bad, otherwise I'll send out a doodle poll, I guess, to, to see what everybody's availability is.
Not Tuesday for me.
Not Tuesday?
Not Tuesday, other than a month. Next Tuesday?
Tuesday's kind of a.
Next week?
Yeah, next week.
Okay.
All right, and then um, kind of following up on the discussion at, finance, um, the clerk position and the deputy finance director jobs are out posted. Um, as of Friday, we have three candidates in each. Wanted to keep the uh, clerk posting out there at least till the end of May. And then I guess we talk about how we want to go on, go about uh, interviews for the clerk position at some point. So unless there's any questions for me, um, I guess I should also mention that uh, REI was here last week to do borings relative to the phase two environmental assessment that we asked for, or had authorized starting for this facility. They're recommending though, we will look for, want to look for asbestos, which we believe we have here, that um, that's probably best done once we're out of the building. Now, I don't know if that's the wisest way to do that, but we can talk about that again further if we think we want to do it sooner. It would have some destructive testing involved at different locations in the building, that's why they're recommending it done later. So.
Any questions for Keith? The only one I have is, I mean, we're, we must be kind of setting our sights, you know, for fall about the move. Right, so are we kind of going through like different file, I mean, you know, contracts? I guess the one that's kind of glaring is, I see all the flags out there for um, fertilization of the lawn. And it's all going to kind of get torn up, right? I mean, I guess, you know, I mean, is that going to be rolled over to the new one? We should be looking at a lot of these contracts and a lot of these agreements. Even rugs and uniforms and all that stuff, does it change when we move to another uh, address? You know, does, you know, those are just big things, sometimes you can never get out of them.
Sure.
Especially garbage, garbage is unbelievable trying to get out of. But um, I, I just saw the flags, the lawn looks great, but if we could sever that early, you know, I know it's probably only a couple hundred bucks, but it's a couple hundred bucks. Yeah, yeah.
Uh, that's village staff.
You guys have little white flags you can stick around?
Yeah, you have, you have to.
Oh.
So. Yes.
Let me do all that talking. And you're, I just got to let him go.
I didn't want to cast it off during that.
To bury himself, and then I'm going to say that's village staff with the flag.
That too, no, I, I know, I know we don't get a lawn service, I know.
We get a lawn.
We had to put a flag up for it.
I just want to make sure that we're okay.
Didn't want to like cut in, I was stating.
Oh, no, 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 anytime, just, you know, I, I'll just keep talking. All right, well, there you go.
All right, I'm.
I stand corrected.
So.
All right, any, anymore from?
Done.
Yeah. Anymore from Keith? No? Uh, how about Cherry? Welcome back from vacation, was it fun?
Yes.
Yeah, good.
Sad, sweet.
Oh.
My daughter live.
Oh, no, I didn't know that, okay.
Yes, I moved my daughter to Florida.
Oh, boy, oh, boy. Where both?
Uh, Dustin.
Yeah.
That is.
Yeah, that's up there.
She's actually.
It's a manhandle.
She's going to live in Niceville.
Yeah, oh, Dustin is beautiful, oh, man, they got some really good ice cream shops there. So that's what I remember, so I'm sorry.
We got a lot more than that there.
I know they do, I know, it's a heck of an area.
The only thing to add to my report is um, I indicated that for Board of Review, we need one member of the Board of Review to attend training each year now.
Okay, I'll say it last year.
It doesn't matter who did last year, so we need a volunteer for this year, but like in the past, I know.
Is it that tape again?
Yeah, I ordered a, I ordered a, I think it's a USB.
Yeah.
That they're going to send. So that should, that should be here the end of this week, I would think.
I'll volunteer too, yeah.
Okay.
Cool.
Anyone else? It's, I think it's like two and a half hours. Take your time.
I can check my schedule, but I can as well.
And you can come and pick up the USB, and then you just take it home and do it.
Yeah.
No?
Nope.
No?
I'll go somewhere else.
You can come here to the municipal center. Yes, we can set you up with a lap, we can set you up with a laptop here and.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, it doesn't have to be all members, I think, I thought it was.
No, but if it's, I think it's good for, for everyone to attend, the more you have, the better.
Yes, I agree.
You know, some members, I think. At least one of you.
Yeah, for sure.
I'll come get him too.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll put an email out when, when I receive the materials.
Yeah, for a while, it was over two years, and so I did it last year, then she says to me, oh, well, you can come do it.
Yeah, the law changed, so.
Yeah, I knew.
Any, any more questions for Cherry? Any more to add? I should have asked you first, okay. Uh, finance?
I have nothing to add.
Anything for finance? I'll see where you're at the last meeting. Uh, Firey Mess, I, I know you're not blueed, but uh, did you have something for us too?
Yeah, a couple of things, so we will, in fact, we spoke about it today, we're going to uh, come up with a new uh, report that will send to both the town and village board every month. It'll probably come for the, the second, or, that's right, you guys only have one board meeting. So it'll come for your board meeting, um, Red Mountain will be the second board meeting because we won't have time to get ready for the first, so we, we're just working out the format and those kinds of things, but that'll be coming. We did um, have a couple of open positions because of all the recent promotions, so uh, um, Deputy Chief Eric Lang started his day, first day today, um, in his new role. We did offer a position to a captain to fill the role that he left, which uh, was Mike Zellner, who was one of our current lieutenants. Basically, kind of like, and I'm sure Clay's in the same position, a lot of times we do a promotion, and there's another promotion, another promotion, so we have to keep running process after process. Um, and we also had a engineer position open, we lost one of our full-time paramedic engineers to medevac, um, and that was filled by uh, one of our part-time members, um, so that, those two people will start their full-time jobs June first. So we have all those open spots full now, which is great. Um, we do have a, it's EMS week, um, starting today, and we do have an event at Station One in Red Mountain on Wednesday. So we did invite some other local departments, uh, City of Wausau, Riverside and Mozeni, I did not hear back from Mozeni, we're all invited if they want to join. We're just going to get, say a few words. I know Chief Bartek and Chief Bowman are both coming from Wausau and Riverside. Uh, State Representative Pat Snyder is going to come, and uh, Don Kimlicka, who is a representative from the state EMS office, is going to attend also. I know I sent out the, to Mark and let him know, anybody from the board at all that would like, like to come, it's Wednesday, again, in Red Mountain at ten o'clock.
Ten to eleven, something like that.
Ten to eleven, eleven thirty somewhere, and we're actually going to do a vehicle extrication demo, uh, Pat Snyder has agreed to be extricated from the vehicle, so we're gonna,
I don't know.
We're going to do that also. And we are pretty blessed because we have uh, two instructors that teach actually at FDIC, which is a, it's the biggest fire department conference in the country. Um, and we have two of our captains actually are instructors for the extrication course down there, so we have some pretty top-notch extrication guys, and they're gonna, they're going to do that on uh, Wednesday, um, so we have that going on. Other than that, we have been busy, um, our hovercrafts have arrived, if you didn't see that on our Facebook page, or the, actually, the news was there today to do a little story on it, but that came back on Saturday, um, so we'll be doing pretty extensive training on that over the next six weeks or so. So you may see it out and about, um, a big part of that is for the O'Clair River, for the kayakers. Um, so we probably will be out in the O'Clair River training fairly often over the next few weeks.
And it'll be housed here.
It's, we were talking about that today, more than likely, what we're probably going to do is have it here in the summer, because we use it on the O'Clair River a lot, and then we might move it to Red Mountain for the winter, because of all the ice fishing that goes out on Lake Wausau.
Good point.
Um, so that may be our plan of attack, but we haven't, that's not figured out in stone for sure, right now, it's, it's here in Weston.
Sounds good. Anymore for Chief Thinky? No, thank you. Uh, Park and Rec?
Um, I did have a report in the packet, um, as you can see, a lot of uh, work going on at the Aquatic Center. Uh, we are a week away from filling the facility, filling the pool up. Um, we'll be in there Memorial Day weekend and early part of the following week with staff training. And we have our first group scheduled for June first, um, and we open to the public on June fourth, so. And we have groups scheduled for the first, second and third prior to this opening. Um, and actually, we received two more calls today on rentals are our groups coming. Um, so our calendar for summer is slowly filling up. So the new system seems to be working great, the Sportsman, which is the new software reason for the Aquatic Center, which is, you know, selling passes, registering for swim lessons. Um, it's also used for park reservations, all park reservations are done online now too. Um, so we reduce the amount of actual paperwork that's changing hands usually. Nate spent uh, two training sessions with uh, a member of Village Rothschild, so they know how to enter all their passes into the software and operate it. Um, we've trained with the Y at least two, two times, we've had training, you know, Jessica and John did training too, so um, we're just making sure we're ready to go and the pool's ready to go.
Good. So what's exciting is, are we, is this kind of an average time to start up?
Uh, yeah, 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 typically, you want to start up around two weeks in advance, just make sure you get the chemicals balanced, heated, and if there's any mechanical things that pop up, you have some time to, to uh, deal with them, so. Um, we've already had a few, um, you know, when we filled the building with water and started up for the first time, we had a, a circulator pump on the water heater started leaking, the shaft seal went out, and it was leaking down the side of the water heater. Um, so we had to replace that, uh, because early last week. Um, so, you know, just those little things, you know, plumbing leaks, stuff like that mostly, so.
Okay, thank you, anymore for Sean?
I did include a picture of the play structure.
Okay.
In my report, um, you can see what it looks like compared to what it did before.
Good, good stuff. Uh, planning and development, Jennifer.
Oh. Open of order, Mr. President.
Yeah.
Do we skip over finance?
Uh, no, we talked to her.
Okay.
Yep.
My apologies.
Planning and development, Jennifer.
You have my report, I don't really have anything additional to add. Um, Scott was at the site today for Dollar General, I heard that there were racks right there on the western Thursday.
All good?
Um, I.
Yeah?
Think there's going to, they're investigating it.
Okay, okay. Yeah. Some rough choice or something like that, I heard?
Someone fell off the roof, yes.
Yeah. The, there were some winds or something, I heard.
Well, an entire wall collapsed.
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
There was somebody with the trust.
Okay. I was out in Colorado and I could hear it all the way out there. So no, somebody emailed me, so. All right, anymore for Jen? Uh, police?
Uh, it's submitted a report, just to recap, we had fifteen hundred and sixty-eight calls in the month of April. Uh, the Village of Weston had twelve hundred and twenty-two of those, some of the highlights were included in the packet. Uh, just a couple of staff reports, our sworn staff is up, um, fully staffed at thirty. Our newest hire is in field training and doing well, we do have one out on a medical and one out on injury. Um, and then of our four clerical positions, we're keeping one open, um, just to see the need, we're anticipating a lot more body cam, open records requests, which is kind of time consuming with redaction, and so far, it's done so good, so good. Our three officers, Tanner Uleg, Wiza, um, Lucas Wiza and Gunner Schultz just got back from Washington DC, they received uh, Chronicle mention for the top cop, which is a national award. Detective Leah Long and Detective Sergeant Dan Goff received that for their actions in the twenty seventeen shooting. Uh, these three received that for their actions in the shooting last year, so. Um, they said it was a really great time, and we were glad that we were able to send them. We'll be getting some pictures out on Facebook with their awards from our award ceremony.
On the twenty-fifth, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, Wisconsin Chiefs, no, Chiefs, uh, Wisconsin Professional Police Association also getting an award for valor, so we'll get those out soon.
Good. Um, any, uh, do you have a notice yet for uh, the joint finance?
Uh, it's looking like.
Either this Wednesday or twenty-fourth?
Week ahead.
This week or next week?
Next week.
Next week, okay. Yeah, there's a five and a five.
That's for, yeah, I'll be there.
Okay. So this Wednesday, no.
Correct.
Next Tuesday, I think, right?
I can't remember now. I can't do Tuesday, Tuesday.
I think it was, it's, it is Wednesday, the twenty, yeah, okay.
Sounds right.
All right, thank you.
Okay, it's not Thursday.
I'll send you out an email, yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't have enough for Thursday.
No worries. No worries, yeah.
Yep. Any um, more for Chief? No? Okay, thank you. Uh, Public Works, Michael?
Um, so I got my report in the packet, uh, just trying to keep cranking out, uh, I guess, grants for uh, bipartisan infrastructure funding that's out there. Um, so we're still waiting confirmation from the DOT uh, for Northwestern. I did submit a grant earlier this month for a fork, electric forklift as part of the carbon reduction program. Uh, we need one for the new building, it's in the CIP, so period if we can get some money for it, instead of us paying for it a hundred percent village, it's worth trying to get some funding, and then uh, we got three other projects uh, yet for the um, June third date for the uh, STP urban uh, projects, which will be Ross Avenue between uh, Metro and Alderson with the City of Schofield, and then uh, Ross Avenue out on the eastern end with the Town of Weston from River Bend out past MacRae La Park, and then Schofield Avenue within the TIFF two boundary from Normandy to Birch Street. Then Marathon County will also be submitting the Ross Avenue and Camp Phillips or County Road X uh, intersection for a grant, so. Should hopefully get uh, at least one of those.
Thank you. Anymore for Michael, Public Works, anybody? Thank you, Michael. Uh, technology, I don't know if Nate is on.
Nate's on.
He is on.
Nate's on vacation.
Oh, Nate's on vacation, okay.
He did put in a.
There's a report, yep.
His report about a survey to try to get some feedback on your thoughts on improvements needed on the website. He started a special last time, so.
It's out now?
He's, he's not present today.
Yeah, but the survey's out.
He has a link.
Okay.
There's a link in his packet.
Okay, oh, must've missed that.
For it.
All right, thank you. And since he's not here, you can't ask for any more questions. Um, acknowledgement of reports or motion?
A motion to acknowledge.
By Hermilyne?
Second.
Second by Feeny. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Uh, work product transmittals, uh, April building permits and April budget status report. One to one at a time?
Moves to acknowledge items thirty and thirty-one concurrently.
All second. Uh, motion by Feeny, second by Cronin, anymore in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carry, consent agenda. Um, what's your pleasure? You want to do these um?
Make a motion to uh, food thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one.
Um, what, if I could uh, request, why don't we pull out thirty-nine?
Okay.
All right, and I think that'll do it right there, let's do thirty-nine separately. Okay?
Second of ours, motion. I'll second your motion.
We have a, a motion by Hermilyne, second by Hardinger. Anymore in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Uh, my thoughts on thirty-nine is um, you know, we've got one, two, three, I think, or two. Uh, three.
Three.
Three. Two, and I, I think um, we might want to um, hold off on stillwater landing, and we've had some issues uh, over uh, many years, and I, we've had some work plans with that management group. And I, I think um, just going into next year, I think we might want to see if we can schedule a meeting uh, here and uh, just go over their game plan and their management plan, uh, what they see in the future. Uh, I've been through, I've been through, I, I go through all over the place and um, you know, I, I think there's just some issues there that we have to maybe clear up and talk about, so.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Issue for.
Yeah, I, I don't think, go ahead.
Um, our new community resource officer, service officer is doing a really good job, he's been in the park creating a plan. Um, he's gone through the trailers, introduced himself, he's got a mapping thing going with um, which ones are vacant, and he's going to work with the village.
Yep.
Coming up soon on some property related ordinance related issues.
Feedback, some feedback from you uh, chief is, we haven't had the calls that we used to have, so it, it's working.
Yes.
Um, but uh, you know, the residents are trying, I, I just don't know if they're getting maybe some assistance or some help with what the.
You have a meeting and Officer Stilberg would be really, a really good resource.
Okay, yeah. Keith?
Just, I was, um, I was informed by Scott Tietrol, our building inspector earlier, right before the meeting actually, that the Marathon County Health Officer that does the inspections is due to do her inspection this Friday at the Mobile Home Park.
That one or all?
That one.
That one, okay.
Okay.
Good, well, it'll be good timing. All right, so um, going back then, um, are we on, we're on thirty-nine, so we actually cleared the rest, all right, so thirty-nine?
Okay, a question on that is, do you want me to just next to um, postpone until?
Yep, I would just defer stillwater and then approve the other ones.
Yeah.
That's, that was my opinion.
I'll make a motion to approve uh, the Mobile Home Park license for Colonial Gardens in Balsam Ridge and defer stillwater landing until June.
Motion by Cronin, second. Second by Feeny. Uh, anymore on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Uh, let's see, ordinances, ordinance number twenty-two dash zero one two, an ordinance to approve the rezoning of a parcel of land at fifty-three oh six Fuller Street from a two-family, two-family, uh, two F two-family, the LI Limited Industrial Zoning District.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Cronin?
Second.
Second by Hermilyne? Anymore in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Uh, no, nothing on resolutions, unfinished business, um. Um, Dan, are you waiting? Is there something that you gendered for you? I just, I don't want you to.
Except for the hint you made, so I didn't.
Oh, all right, good, all right. Let's see, uh, unfinished business, uh, forty-four, update on American Rescue Plan, ARPA, our funds.
So what you have in the packet is what we went through in finance, so there, we're bringing it back to finance, we asked, one of the committee members asked for a different layout to more information, so we're going to bring that back next time. Is there anything else you want the finance department to consider when bringing it back to finance committee for our next month?
I, I guess I'll, I'll go back to what we discussed in the finance committee. I think there's something that the first responders need, we have money earmarked, already set aside in the bank that they could use now. I'd like to know from them what specifically they could use, so we can get that to them while we're making decisions on a larger project. So it's not something they're waiting for in the meeting.
They were waiting um, for the equipment purchasers, they're waiting for procurement policy, which just got approved, so I'll be emailing them out that tomorrow. So um, other than that, that's the only thing they're really waiting on um, for that.
What kind of policy I'm sorry?
The procurement policy that you just passed the finance committee, um, we need to have that in place to spend federal funds.
How long does that policy usually take to fill out and get approved?
What?
How long does it usually take to get approved?
It was um, kicked back to finance last month, so it was supposed to get passed last month.
So it's got approved.
I'm excited about my agenda tonight.
And then it'll be on uh.
Zone here.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the next day.
Yep, and then once it's done, it's done, it's approved.
And I have some proposals already to go for the first wave of spending.
Yep.
Wednesday, so.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so done, 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 that's our update, because we have an update every month.
Yeah, just let me know if you need anything.
Okay. Forty-five, procurement policy for grant purchase.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Hermilyne?
Second.
Second by Feeny, uh, by Hardinger, okay. Uh, anymore on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So Carrie, uh, new business. Um, if you don't mind, let's move up to fifty, so we can clear that one for our guest tonight. Is that what we're talking about, right? So if, if no objections, let's move to fifty, uh, review and possible award of bids for village entryway signage. Just got that.
Um, do you want, well, Dan's here to make a, give us a presentation, kind of run down on a bid results, um, this is something that has been discussed at various times, I guess going back at least a year ago with, uh, both the board. I think the CDA was involved at one time, the board and the plan commission particularly. So, um, entryway signage has been one of those things that was identified in our, in our conference of plan as well, as a, as a need, I, throughout the village. So we have some options to consider, I guess, in terms of this bid, and I think Dan's better prepared to address the detail than I am, so. Um, I don't know, Dan, if you would like to take it from here?
Yeah. Um, this was all part of the entryway sign plan, and we were gonna do it last year, and things just got too late, so basically what it comes down to is there's three types of signs in the entryway sign plan, there's primary signs, which would be identical almost to what we have out in front of municipal center, approximately foot long stone bottom on it, the only difference is this sign out here has electronic message board. Uh, primary signs that would be built would not have the electronic message board. The locations of them, according to the plan, would be on Camp Phillips Road, one would be just south of Quick Trip on the east side of the road, so traffic coming off of twenty-nine that wants to go north would see the sign, it would sit in the east right away, I've got permits from the Marathon County Highway Department to place it within there right away. The second one would go southbound, so if you were coming off of twenty-nine and you wanted to head south, you were going toward Cheryl Tire, it would sit on the east, uh, excuse me, on the west side of County Highway X about three hundred and fifty feet north of Westview Boulevard, same type of sign, one-sided, eight feet, stone wrapping on the bottom. The third sign that's in there is located right now on Schofield Avenue by Normandy Street. There's an existing sign there that says Village of West, and it sits on top of a big precast concrete fixture that's been there for quite a while.
Where is it?
It's on Normandy Street.
Yep.
On the, so it'd be on the south side of Schofield Avenue at Normandy Street.
Okay.
It sits on the east side of Normandy Street.
Right by Tommy Wash.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
It's lighted.
Okay, yep.
The plan called for the signs to be lighted, okay, so those are the three primary signs. The options on the primary signs are, one and two are the ones on Camp Phillips, three is one by Normandy. The original plan called to take the sign off that sits on top of the precast concrete, and there's pictures of them in there, Michael, if you go to my presentation. This is the original sign plan, okay? Boom. Okay, the bottom picture on there would be what the new primary sign by Normandy would look like, primary sign three. Remove the sign that's there, that's what it showed, double-sided getting built. Um, we did a, we did an option on that to instead of replacing that sign with the thirteen-foot-long one like the bottom, we would just remove the sign that's there, take the precast out of there, and place a sign like the other two in that location. Or you could leave the sign that's there right now, okay? So that covers the primary signs. Then we go to three secondary sign, well, yeah, that's the primary sign that's sitting there right now, the lights are in and everything. Says Village of Weston both sides, sitting on a precast concrete cabinet. The top of the screen here are the secondary signs, we, those aren't in place already. One is located out on Schofield Avenue by Clux Bar, the other one's sitting on Northwestern over by Moret Lane, they're lighted.
Yep.
And the third one sits right by Quick Trip on Camp Phillips Road facing south, it's on the east side, okay?
Hmm.
Those are the three, the plan would be, take the one by Quick Trip, move it down on the Business Fifty-One by what used to be Triggs, Festival now. Would sit on the corner, I've got permit from DOT last year, I obtained a permit from them to place it there within there right away. The one by Clux Bar would stay, the one out on Northwestern, we would move, take it out on the Camp Phillips Road north of Northwestern for the southbound traffic, so as they come over the hill, they come into west, and it would sit on the west side of the road facing north. The only thing would be, they would move the structures, put a new concrete basin, so it would sit, cross when I move it around, and then they would make a new sign, just as this plan shows. A metal sign, Village of Weston, attach it to those, all three, and then it'd show it on the plan to paint the top green, the arch. So those are the secondary signs, okay? Then we go to what's called tertiary signs, those are basically outlying signs, there's ten of them. One on County Highway, I won't go through them all, but basically there's ten of them. What they're gonna be is they're gonna be metal signs, eighth-inch-thick aluminum, same as the DOT sign, that's a picture. The only difference is we're not gonna do steel posts. The wayfinding signs that were put in with the steel post, the problem is when you put a post out in the right of way, it has to meet DOT or Fed world crash standards. We run into problems with these posts, we, a couple of them we've changed already and just went to a four-by-six, treated wood post, same as the DOT uses. You drilled inch and a quarter holes in them to meet the crash-worthy standards. So when I did this contract, I just specked them out as four-by-six wooden signed posts, it'll be a metal sign similar to what that looks like, but it won't be a quarter-inch thick, it's only gonna be eighth-inch.
And the wood versus the metal, I mean, what, what's the reasoning?
Uh, the break.
Saying crash, but is it also leveling? Yeah, a helmet time level, it, it just drove me crazy when they were being put in a year ago or a year and a half.
Getting blown over too, uh.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know what it was, but.
The problem is the breakaway couplers they got came.
Okay.
From Illinois, they're a hundred and twenty bucks or a hundred and ten dollars a piece, it's two hundred and twenty dollars for the breakaway couplers, they're cast. Wind will take them down, part of the problem is, is the wayfinding signs that were there, the signs are so big that they catch the wind, and we're having trouble trying to keep them, they're banded to the posts, we're just gonna go with the same spec that the DOT uses on their aluminum posts, which means, uh, uh, excuse me, on their aluminum signs, it's a four-by-six treated wood post, the only thing you have to do is you have to put uh, a nylon washers on the backside, you can't let the aluminum come in contact with the post, because eventually it'll lead up the sign. But I just pulled everything out of the DOT specs as far as the thickness of the signs, and how they're fastened, the mountings and everything. And the posts are readily available, uh, we can get them, we buy them through Marathon County Highway Department, if something, whatever happened, we can get them for replacements instead of going into steel.
So like the one coming in out of Town of Weston, uh, on SS, that one is gonna go to something like this, but.
Two wood poles. Two wood poles, yeah.
From the curb.
Yep, and there's one out on Schofield Avenue past the bridge out there, East of J, there's gonna be one sitting on the north side there, so. Um, what happened is, with the contract together, I sent it out to ten sign companies. The ones that answered were Graphic House on Wassa, Creative Signs out of DePere, Stratford Signs, they all completed the bid packets and they put bids together and sent them in, we did a bid opening, I can't remember, I think it was March something, I'm sorry, it's been busy. But anyhow, these are just a simple bid tab for the, uh, P one would be a primary sign one. So primary one and two are gonna be the ones on Camp Phillips by twenty-nine, north and south of twenty-nine. Graphic House is low on that price, the one thing you gotta take into consideration, when Creative Sign bid this, they did not bid the stone wrapping around the bottom. And I, I sent everything back to everybody and they never bid it, so their bid is almost the same as what Graphic House, but there's no stone on the bottom, so. Right now, Graphic House is low, the primary one and two are the same price, primary three is one by Normandy, and that would be the thirteen-foot-long sign, the big one, that's why that one's thirty-three thousand dollars for that sign, because it's such a big sign. So that's the primary ones, we do have the option with primary one to remove that sign, the village would, we'd remove the cabinet, and they would just put the eight-foot sign, just like the ones on Camp Phillips would be the primaries. That drops the price down to twenty-one thousand dollars for the primary one over, uh, it's primary three over by Tommy Wash. So it goes from thirty-three thousand down to twenty-one thousand four hundred and eighteen. If you want to have us remove the sign that's there, remove the cabinet, and just put an eight-foot wide sign like out here, okay? The other option is do nothing, leave a sign that's over there, there for now.
So the Normandy one by Festival Foods, that's a new placement, right?
Harding?
I don't believe there's one there now.
Yes.
Fifty-one, yes.
Fifty-one, yeah, Festival Foods, that I knew one would be Normandy.
No, these are prime, these are the eight footers, these are primary signs.
Right, I did, uh, I just, I've been thinking about that ever since Rothschild put theirs across the street, I, I just, I guess I don't wanna kind of think of like, we're just, you know, kind of throwing signs where they've put a sign.
Well, one thing you need to know too, I contacted the DOT this last year, they are gonna put up the green signs that say Village of Weston with the, with the, uh, population on them, they're gonna put them on Business Fifty-One.
Okay.
I don't know exactly when, but they said they would do it. So this is the cost for the primary signs with, it'd be fifty-one thousand five thirty if we removed the Normandy sign that's there and just put the eight-foot one. If you'd scroll backwards, you'd have to add another, well, went from twenty-one to thirty-three, so another, another eleven, twelve thousand dollars more if you wanna put a thirteen-foot sign, the big one, original according to the plan for that Normandy sign.
So total package with everything, the ten small ones, everything, what is the total package? Just, just.
He'll go, he'll, he'll hit it, I'll write a summary at the bottom.
I feel like I'm being teased.
A hundred thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars, I believe, is what it's gonna be. Michael, can you go back to the?
And can all of this be?
The attachment that's on the report itself?
Um, hotel, with tourism, because did we not use that initially for the first round?
So we used it for the wayfinding signs.
I should have included a tagline too, Michael.
There's an additional thirty-some thousand dollars that was in the tourism packet last week, we did not get it approved, so we'll be bringing it back to the Tourism Commission, but there's only about thirty thousand up in there.
Okay.
And it would be up to the commission if they want to approve that, it's a very gray area if entrance signs, because entrance signs welcome to the community. Uh, the wayfinding they look at is more for people out of the area, they're looking to find their way, so it's, it'd be up to the commission to decide.
Yeah, and are we paying that sixty-seven thousand in over three years, one lump? Or are we doing it in a three-year, uh, for the field house?
The field house is over.
A three-year period, right?
Yeah.
I thought we had, and you're saying there's only, there'll only be others left in there?
So, the money that I'm looking at for this is the money that was left over from twenty nineteen.
Oh, okay.
So if we wanted, we could tell, ask the CDB to give us some of our Weston only money. Or we could decide that the money that's being transferred to the capital equipment fund, we wanna hold some of that back, I mean, there, there's money, depends what the Tourism Commission would like to do with it, for the tourism-only funds, and then the village has obviously saved the Weston funds.
The first round here was a hundred and sixty thousand, right? Uh, for the wayfinding? I, am I somewhat?
It came in under budget, I don't, I didn't think it was that much.
Wayfinding costs, uh?
And then, and who did we?
That was sixty, yeah, I didn't think it was over a hundred, I thought it was like sixty. Sixty-five thousand.
Okay.
Wasn't it?
And, and, uh, I know it was third-party purchased, you know, the signs, but then they were installed by, um, by someone that's not on this pitch right now, right?
Mm-hmm, yes, right.
Right, thank you.
So I, this has been summarized in terms of what we felt would be appropriate to go to tid one versus tourism, or I guess you have, you have other options, I know. Jessica had mentioned that we had budgeted a certain amount, or felt a certain amount of this would be funded through tid one.
Yes.
We took out tid two as a funding source in our project plan amendment for that sign by Normandy, so. I guess the rest of the, so it's, you know, in total, you see the bottom line numbers there for each possible way, I guess, right now that we were thinking would be the logical funding or potential funding sources. And then the other option to consider just be that, not funding the sign in Normandy and doing it later.
The wayfinding were seventy thousand, one seventy-two.
I personally would prefer to see us either retrofit the sign at Normandy or leave it as it is, I don't, I mean, I personally don't think there's really a whole lot wrong with it.
Leave it as it is.
Correct, well, as it sits.
Yeah. Wha- wha- which one, what, uh, festival or the one?
One at Normandy.
Right by Tommy Wash.
Okay, tough, yeah, okay.
Cause my question was gonna be, if we just, and I, I'm not, I'm not saying necessarily in favor of just replacing the sign, but what's the difference between leaving the pedestal and replacing the sign versus replacing it all in total?
It's the size, in the, in the original plan, it's the size of the sign, they leave the pedestal, but the sign that they showed to put on there was thirteen feet long.
Okay.
And that's why the cost, and it's double-sided, and it's got some other, you know, it's, it's not just a flat piece, there's other pieces to it, if you, would go back and look at that. That's why the price of it is what it is.
Okay, cause I know that sign drives me a little nuts, but I think for the money, it's better to just leave it there, it, it tells where we are. I mean, it's not actually on our border, if you look at it.
Jessica, is this something we could use up before?
Pardon?
We wanted to use ARPA for this, could we?
Yes.
Dan, what's your recommendation?
You mean, I don't, I'm not into the funding part of it, I'm sorry, I don't wanna comment on that, I've got enough just keeping track of where they're going.
I personally think we could spend our money better elsewhere and leave that sign on Normandy, like.
I, I just think people are gonna look at that and say, wow, we spent all that money on that big sign and now?
Well, to me, I mean, I, I really like all the screen stuff, and I like all the lights, but to me, that's still a new sign, to, to me, by Tommy, I mean, it just, it is.
I, I agree.
And it's, uh, what is that, Jen, uh, Damian Farber or whatever it's called, I mean, it's, it's been criticized like crazy, but you know what? It, it's a nice look, I don't care what you're saying.
Yeah, it's what.
You know, I mean, you know, the way that used to look with no trees and all that stuff, I mean.
I think it's a nice sign.
Yeah, it is. It took a little snow.
Just one thing, I'll, I'll let you know, like even the tertiary signs, I think they're a good idea, and it comes from my history with Marathon County. If you go to dispatch, when they get phone calls, people will call them that there's accidents and cars in the ditch, and they don't even know what county they're in.
So when you, tertiary, say that again.
The, like the tertiary signs, like on Highway J, you're, you're coming north, and that's gonna be the one on the two wood posts that are gonna say welcome to Weston.
Gotcha.
I think that's a great thing, because people are gonna see that, and they're gonna go, okay, I know I'm in Weston. You know, the, the dispatchers talked to them, they were in a trouble all the time, but.
I'll say a few of those are falling into disrepair too, where there's one on J, or not J, um, Ross Ave right by my house, and I drive by it all the time.
Well, it's a, it's a constant reminder.
Yes.
It's just repetitive time and time, it's just like, you know, Safer on the equipment now. And we're wondering why it's, no, the media doesn't use Safer, well, we didn't have it on the equipment, I, I, I just think Josh did an incredible job with that on all the equipment, and it was good. What's your pleasure?
How's this wrap into our, our new municipal building?
How's it wrap, well, we're gonna move this sign to the municipal, to the municipal.
Yeah, that one's moving over there.
Uh-huh.
This sign is moving.
Yeah, when we purchased it, it was with the idea that it, you know, if we, if we had a new building, it would.
I just didn't know if there were any building signage involved with that building planned, or if that was something that was in this plan. Or if it was just a.
It was just strictly what entryway finding to the village, yeah.
Um, it's a good point though, I mean, how does it dovetail into that, I mean, would there be some commonality to it, you know?
Well, we'll have, we'll have this sign out front, you know, I guess it's consistent with the look that we're, that we are recommending here, that's been part of this bid.
Changing the safety building, different look and probably get rid of that pedestal out on the street. And then, and, and there by the safety building, we have the new wayfinding green sign, and sixteen feet past it is the old one.
Those are gonna come down.
Yeah, but I mean, I would have thought that it would have been pulled and ganked right away.
Um.
Says municipal court, you know, in safety building, and then right after that is the old white one, about twenty feet past it says municipal court.
We can get rid of it tomorrow.
Yeah, well, I was gonna just, I was gonna chain it and take it, but, anyway, okay.
Let me know, Mark. It sure will happen.
Alright. Um, more discussion?
Well, where is the funding coming from this day?
I forgot.
Recommendation would be, uh, as that last, that, that, this, it'd be the bid tab with uh, sign number three alternate bid, we would eliminate sign three, or primary sign three from the, from the award, so. We would have forty-six thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty cents coming from tid one, and what's the math, thirty? Difference between fifty-four thousand two seventy-one twenty minus twenty-one four eighteen coming to tourism.
And we had that towards the math, right?
Thirty-two, eight fifty-three, twenty.
Plus forty-eight?
Well, that'd be the tourism.
Oh, I'm sorry. So that'd be the, yeah, so that.
So the two funding, the two funding sources would be tourism and tid one.
Right.
Sign three is the one in Normandy, is that correct?
That's right, yeah, we would leave that one.
Yeah, so that's coming out of there.
Oh, coming out.
Twenty-one.
Oh, no, coming out of the, the bid.
Oh, I see, got it.
Can you just put that, uh, Normandy sign back up by Tommy, Charlie Wash? So all the rest of the signs, you know, if you could just go like, okay, so that's one of them, somewhat, with color, I mean, with the. I'm, I'm just wondering about the color, then if you could find that Normandy one, so it's got a, kind of a green hue, because we're trying to follow Everest a little bit. Then, is that a burgundy or red?
Burgundy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Burgundy background.
It looks a lot like the, they're.
Yeah, oh, there it is, okay, I couldn't remember if the letters were different color. I was just thinking if we could just change the color, you know, add some green in there, but that's not gonna work, un- unless you just, is that a stained concrete block? Or is that, you know?
Yeah, it's like a brown.
Oiled or stained or what?
Yeah, the concrete, oh, the sign itself, itself is probably colored.
I mean, so that, that'll look odd to all the other green hues, but if you took that, whatever that is, Aztec orange or burnt orange or pumpkin orange, and took that to the green hue, it, it would sure dovetail into all the other green. Just, just a thought.
Dana's with Graphic House, and the other, the other side of it too is if you did wanna reface it, you could leave the structure there and just put another face onto.
Absolutely.
To cover over what's there on the sign itself. So there's room for movement down the line on that, if you wanna do something where it would more match the other signs, the other.
Just a new face, not, not replace.
Yeah, we wanna take the whole thing off, and just stick and make a new sign face and put it basically attached to that.
I'm good to.
What would that run?
I, I am, that's my opinion.
I don't know. I figured you meant not, but I thought maybe you might, you know. Well, can we get some costs on that before we completely?
Is this like right now?
I would think we, well, you could, you could, you could award it as was recommended, and we could entertain a change.
Pulling out, pulling out this one.
We could entertain the change to the contract later. We could entertain the change to the contract later, or as a change order.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, cause this was an alternate anyway, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Well, I'll move to award, you know, where's the word?
True.
Well, we didn't have the recommended, uh, language here, so.
Yeah, that's.
And we'd be recommending for the staff summary, which is page two eighty-seven of the packet. For signs to, uh, entryway signage to graphic house, with the exception of the, uh, we would be eliminating primary sign number three from the bid package.
So that's what you said?
That's what I said.
Motion by Emily?
I'll second.
Second by Cronin, any more in discussion? So that pulls out that twenty-one thousand, right, or?
Correct.
Right, okay. And, uh, I think funding sources would be tid one and tourism. Any more in discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, so carry. Uh, moving back to forty-six. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Uh, moving back to, uh, new business forty-six, Birch Street Construction Services proposal. Thank you. Any, any questions? So, uh, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the proposal from Becker Hoppy for construction services for the Birch Street Crosspoint to Shore Reconstruction Project for, for a time and materials not to exceed the price of one hundred eighty-four thousand five hundred ten dollars.
Motion by Feeny? I'll second. Second by Cronin, any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Forty-seven, Business Fifty-One Utility Design Proposal. Any more on this, no?
I mean, I.
You're just gonna throw the dice and?
I, I can add on, I, I guess.
No, I like it, no, let's just, let's see if it goes. Excuse me, anybody's pleasure? This is, is Becker Hoppy who?
That's who Rothschild and Schofield.
Okay, right. And, and we, we dovetailed right into that, normally Hu Sheng has more on this.
Yeah.
This is a cup of tea. But, uh, twenty twenty-five, right?
Correct, yeah, it's Plan Twenty Twenty-Five Construction.
Kind of band-aided it, uh, what, two years ago, a little bit?
Yeah.
Probably make it to that.
I move to approve the proposal for Becker Hoppy for utility design services for the Business Fifty-One Reconstruction Project not to exceed the price of sixty-seven thousand three hundred and twenty dollars.
Motion by Cronin, second. Second by Feeny, uh, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Well, seven and eight alternatives. So I think we brought this back to, uh, Public Works, or no, and Parks, but the Parks didn't actually need. So we must have a recommendation?
Yeah, the recommendation was to, uh, uh, go with alternate number one, or not to include alternate number one, and keep the bathrooms located in the pump house. And then to also utilize, um, a, a third alternate for the park shelter and have it, um, attached to the pump house. Kind of on the schematic on the site. Uh, the shelter instead of being located up here on the north side by well seven, uh, it'd be attached to the pump house. So it'd be right next to the bathroom, so.
We, we are doing one less build?
There'd be one less structure.
One less build, but then we added public bathrooms.
Correct.
Yep.
But that was the recommendation.
And bathrooms to, uh, the pump house too.
The, just, yeah, the bathrooms just at the pump house, there wouldn't be any bathrooms anywhere else then.
Okay.
I had made a comment that I was concerned with all the vandalism that we had in the bathrooms, why we, but they feel we need one there, so.
So overall, um, and, and whoever wants to answer this, is this a less or a more from original?
Uh, it's less expensive.
Okay, all right.
So the original proposal for the shelter building was one forty-six or the one sixty-three number?
One sixty-three.
One sixty-three.
Yeah.
Um, and that would, they gave us a kind of projected cost of between sixty and eighty thousand for the shelter instead of the one sixty-three.
Okay. And will, will this, this one take care of Sandy? You know, across the river, right, no?
No, it won't take care of the north side of the river.
But right now we're doing, uh.
Portable restrooms.
Right now.
Yes, right now that, uh, portable restrooms, the two that are placed there is five fifty a month.
Yeah, okay. Do those get vandalized?
No.
Does it be easy to fix, just get, you know, ask for, get new ones? Cause is vandalism covered under, um, the rentals?
Yeah, we, they, we don't do anything with the.
I mean, so if they get vandalized, we just can ask for new ones and they gotta fix it.
Ryan suggested put portables over here, they didn't. It wasn't, uh, particularly, uh.
We currently do have a portable located at that site, at the disco first day.
So, I mean, and just to the, just to understand the perspective. Since this is a well site, this, this, originally this whole property was purchased as a feature of well sites for the village. And it has become used as the disco park. Uh, first because that was easy to put it in place. We're having people, we're, we're, uh, encouraging people to use that site. And if we're gonna have facilities, I don't think we want something that can be tipped over right near the wellhead. I think we need, I think we need a public bathroom or restroom facility inside a structure. Despite, I know the concerns about vandalism, but, you know, we'll be visiting a lot more regularly as a well site than we probably would. Uh, maybe as a, as a park site, and I, I guess we'll have some additional security there because it will be a well site. So, in my opinion, we should have a facility that's gonna keep them away from tipping over a, a, uh, portable bathroom right by the wellhead itself.
Okay.
So. One of the other items that was discussed at Public Works and Parks was the use of the walking path. You know, there's pretty heavy traffic, people walk from, say even Ross Avenue and they get out towards the elevators coming back. There's a restroom there that could be used as part of an accessory facility, you know, to the walking path that's along Campville Road.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
So, Michael, which option were you?
So the Public Works Committee and Parks, um, recommended, uh, to include the, uh, public restrooms. And then the, uh, third alternate, um, for the shelter at the pump house. Uh, right now, there's just kind of a, a guesstimate from the contractor of sixty to eighty thousand. There, there's not a final design on that, but, uh, that, that'd be versus the one sixty, so. You know, that'd be about a hundred thousand dollars less than what, uh, it'd be if we built that shelter by the, um, the well head on the well.
Who's, who's the, what'd you say contractor?
The contractor is Ellis.
Okay, Ellis, okay, all right. Okay?
We, we will get up, you know, a hard number obviously before.
Correct.
Before construction will take place.
We have a bathroom at the kayak on Ross, right?
We do.
We have one on J too?
No.
Is it more water there? Why, I just don't know.
No.
I, I mean, I, I went out there and looked at that and I just don't understa- I, I, you know, I can't help questioning stuff. But, you know, such a need there, but then, cause is it more in view, I mean, people see you go, but on J they don't.
I, I think when the one on, um, Ross got put in, there was a lot of concern from the neighboring residents that would be encouraging people to, uh, use the woods in their backyard, so.
Now this, you can do it.
Yeah.
No neighbor.
Yeah.
Are we still doing a lot of vandalism with the shelters too, or just in the bathrooms, or?
It goes in streaks, um, and we can go by it without any, this last rash was, you know, it's at the parks, it's at areas that are wooded and quiet and dark.
Yeah.
Um, really no rhyme or reason.
Is there lighting in the parking lot there now?
Um, I don't know, do all of them have lighting or not?
Um, well, specifically this location.
Yeah.
Also, location does not currently have like a street light or anything, there's no electricity there. I mean, it is something obviously that can be requested, um, because all of our other parks that have park lighting, public service will put in, put in lights. Um, I think they're limited to every two hundred feet, um, also like on the entry road at Lock Me Out, there's two, two power poles, two light poles. Um, there is a cost involved, obviously a monthly cost though, cause we do pay electricity for them. Um, so, uh, but we do have, you know, we have one at the Dog Park, we have one at Kelly Land, one, one at Kennedy. So most of our parks, main parks have something right by the bathroom and shelter. Um, you know, the ones that got damaged last weekend, um, both have lighting right near them. And it didn't deter them, I mean, they did it right next to the light, basically.
Did it get, are they locked at night?
So, the bathrooms are open.
Twenty-four seven.
Twenty-four seven, yeah.
I mean, I, I'd, I'd be all for a public restroom there, cause I, I know what you're talking about, through that, that porta john right there. And there's a lot of people that walk up and down, there's people that use that park.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm a shelter.
Right, and there's some, I mean, that is something we've talked about in the past, is doing time locks, you know?
Yeah.
Um, basically it's a time lock, so it would lock, shut down. You're limited on how much you can program them, um, and you, it's the real sophisticated ones, you need wifi and you need a software program, um, but they have ones that are a little easier, like if you program just to open at six AM and close at ten. Of course, you have an emergency exit in case you get locked inside when it's locked. Um, but though, that is an option that, I think the, well, last time I priced it out was around, around six hundred dollars a door, I think. Um, which, the grand scheme of, you know, one, one vandalism incident, you know, um.
I guess I thought they were locked at night.
Yeah, sort of.
Yeah, I didn't realize they were left open.
The vandalism was all one weekend, right?
It was all one weekend.
At how many, two or three parks?
Two.
Two?
But, two parks and a trail.
And the trail?
Yeah.
All the same handwriting?
Nope.
Nope, really?
Nope. There's definitely some things you could pick up by the photographs.
Yeah, I saw some of the photographs.
Um, and, I mean, obviously this is not the first time, uh, like Clay said, last year we had three restrooms in one night. All the paper towel dispensers and all the soap dispensers were destroyed off the walls. That's obviously, how does that happen at three locations?
Yeah.
All the same thing, you know, um. It varies, it, it moves around, uh, like Clay said, I mean, we have, you know, we have at least two shelter roofs where the kids go up there and have rip shingles off. Um, right now, we only have one that happened to.
Oh, I mean, I was, I mean, what, two years ago we were talking about, uh, Ross Avenue Bridge over there with all the vandalism and some of the kids from the daycare that would walk by and their teacher saw some of the stuff underneath the bridge. I don't know, my, my thought was to just graffiti the living heck out of it, so that it's like nothing. And so it, like, we're used to the train cars, all graffiti for the last thirty, forty years. Maybe put some proper graffiti on there and not so crazy, and then maybe they'll go, well, then they'll go graffiti something else. Yeah, I don't know, I, I just don't know what the heck to do there, and now summer's coming, more idle time.
Cameras.
Cameras, and that's the only way.
That's the only way.
Gotta catch them, yeah.
We actually have an item on the agenda to discuss that tonight.
I saw it, yeah.
Yeah, I forgot to put a light up there, put a camera with it.
Yep.
And that way, maybe that's just what we have to do.
I mean, using a wellhouse, I would, you sure wouldn't want to be having.
Yeah, it's an infrastructure.
In that area.
Yeah, I think something like that, we should definitely try to monitor, but that's our public water system.
I'd be interested to hear a cost on, on getting time locks for our, for all of our park bathrooms.
Yeah, I thought they were.
I thought they were locked at night.
So maybe that's a good ARPA, a good use of our ARPA money.
I think so, we were just talking about how it would benefit the community, we have the resources there.
Everyone could use it, yeah.
Yeah, everybody could use it and.
Okay.
Feel better about it.
Let's push our way through, uh, alternate seven and eight, what's your pleasure?
Uh, Mike?
I'm sorry, if I'm reading this correctly, the alternate for one for the bathrooms is one forty-six and the, the park shelter would not exceed eighty thousand, is that correct?
Yeah.
So combined, we're looking at two twenty-six potentially?
Yeah.
Okay.
No motion?
Go ahead.
No motion.
Uh, okay, I'll motion to approve, uh, the construction contract, alternate one to install public restrooms at the pump house for a cost of one forty-six, one hundred forty-six thousand. And alternate for park shelter included with the pump house for budgetary cost not to exceed eighty thousand.
Second.
Motion by Hardinger, second by Feeny, any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, so carry. Uh, fifty-one, beverage service agreement. Uh, you skipped forty-nine. I just wanted to see how fast Michael would jump on it. So forty-nine, mini excavator purchase. How, how mini is mini, or how big is mini?
Uh. I have a picture of it here.
Okay. Is that, uh, something that, like, they used, uh, over on, uh, in our neighborhood when they were, oh, is, is that actually it?
Yeah, so, so this.
They were digging out the, uh, where the water backs up and goes into the neighborhood there?
Yeah, so.
The one they used at they was a rental, or we don't own that?
No, we, we own this one currently.
Okay.
We bought it in twenty sixteen because we were spending more money renting one every year than it cost us to own it, uh, essentially, so. Uh, we did buy one in twenty sixteen, uh, I guess that's where our fleet foreman, uh, between the two of them, uh, last fall kinda started going through the wear items on it, the upcoming costs, um, so their estimate is about eighty-five, just eight thousand four thirty-three and just, you know, the replacements of the existing machine and what we need to do to kind of get it back into, uh, I guess, like new condition, um, so we did, uh, get a quote from, uh, Soderski, who is, uh, the local Bobcat dealer. And I guess they're offering us, uh, forty-five thousand for our current machine. Um, and then there's also a twenty-eight thousand dollar government discount, so, um, you know, the retail price of the unit is hundred and nine thousand. After, after all said and done, um, our, our cost would be thirty-five thousand, um.
But it would cost us eight thousand to fix it?
Yeah, but it costs us eight thousand to fix it, so.
And it's a sixteen, how many hours on it?
I don't know that off the top of my.
Well, that'd be a good item to have, I mean, I, 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 I have no idea how often we use it.
Uh, it's, oh, almost daily, uh.
But not in the wintertime?
In the wintertime, we use it for brushing and, uh, clearing right of ways, uh, it's where we do some of our pond cleaning, uh, give it, uh, maintenance.
Okay, Barb?
Yeah, well, part of the discussion was the fact that this actually was in the CIP for what year?
Sixteen.
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
And my question was, and I understand that there's the room tax, the, the CIP in there. But my question was if this was an addition to their CIP or if there was something that was not, it was re, you know, that they weren't going to do this year. Because that room tax fund monies would just apply to, we would borrow less.
Right.
Where if we buy it from that fund and we spend all the rest, we're increasing the CIP. So I wanted to know what was not being done.
So we initially had fifty thousand budgeted for a kind of a, a brining attachment for, um, our trucks, our, our winter trucks. Uh, we ended up, uh, Dan found a, uh, a used, uh, a slightly used, I guess, brine maker from the Dunn County Highway Department online that we purchased for, uh, just shy of fifteen hundred dollars, so.
Which is fifty thousand, but.
Fifty thousand.
Wow.
So that's, so this excavator at the thirty-five thousand i- is a swap with that fifty thousand, so there's still that, uh, what, fifteen thousand dollar, um, difference.
Right, well, that's what I wanted to make sure, that it wasn't something just added to the CIP, that there was something taken out, so.
Yeah, so.
I mean, and also maybe on the thought that, you know, sometimes, I, I know it's great that we saved the money, but just because we saved it doesn't mean we have to spend it right away. And that, that's why I thought the hours would be really good on this, what, what, in sixteen when we bought that, what did it cost us?
Uh, sixty-one thousand.
Now it's at a hundred and nine?
Yeah.
And it's paid for, I did ask that, not still paying on it.
Yeah.
So what's the, what's the chief wisdom in buying a new one versus just fixing up the one we have?
We, we can keep fixing up the one we have, um, but eventually, you know, it, it does age. Um, and then we have downtime and, uh, I guess other items, so it was just a.
But it's a initial, I mean, with, with the twenty-five thousand, our, you know, so-called grant that we all end up paying anyway, uh, it's, it's still a thirty-five thousand dollar push. And, and they're gonna give us fifty grand for this one, right? And we paid sixty. And, and they're going to give us 50 grand for this one, right? And we paid 60,000?
They'll give us 45,000.
Forty-five thousand, and we paid 61,000, six years ago. That's, that's a heck of a trade-in.
Yeah, well, that was what the committee felt to me, that it was.
I mean, 8400, what is 8400? I mean, sometimes, you know, you don't put a new road in, you, you put them pebbles on and, you know, gets another five years of life. I'm not trying to be a stinker here, but. How much have you spent on repairs the last five years? I'm not looking for an exact figure.
There hasn't been anything major, but prices, in general, I'd say it's probably, what, two grand a year, so probably 12.
So, 12, almost since we bought it? And then now, 8400 is like a bigger number. My one opinion, I would put the 8400. If, if it was a business that I owned, I would definitely try to get more life out of it. That's my thought. And where would the, the new purchase come from, Sodorsky too?
Correct, yeah.
A, a fix there, or a, a new purchase either way?
Yeah, I mean, the fix, we'd likely try to do in-house, so if we do end up shipping it out for somebody else to do the work.
So, 8400 is.
It's just the materials.
So, doing it in-house might be cheaper?
No, the 8400 is just the materials.
Oh.
So, if we do.
And our time.
And our time, so if we send it out somewhere, then we're paying somebody else's labor costs too, so.
Which could be, you know, 12 grand.
Yeah. Or whatever.
What's your pleasure?
Um, I guess the utility felt this was a good price for what, you know, with everything we're getting. And like I said, when I made sure that it was not in addition to, I guess, I moved to approve the purchase of the Bobcat Mini Excavator from Sodorsky Equipment as a purchase price of 35,391, 31.
Motion to approve by Hermling?
I'll second.
Second by Hardinger. Any more on the discussion?
I have a que- is it, is the purchase price 35,391 and 31, or is it 26,958, 31?
That's always 35.
Yeah, that other number is.
The 28 is the, the grant offered. So, we're getting a 45,000, our trade-in, plus 28, 671, from some.
Because we're a government entity.
Yeah.
They knock costs off. Yeah, so, so the 26,958, I guess, would be, is that cushion of, you know, between the purchase price and what it costs to buy the materials?
I just know how I am when I go buy a car or equipment. I, I, it's not the prettiest thing. My wife normally doesn't go along. So, do we try to barter this? I mean, or is it a 109 is the asking price and that's what we pay?
Well, yeah, I.
Do we shop around?
We can. All of our attachments are Bobcat attachments, so if we.
So, we.
Look at a different brand, we've got.
So, we, we don't barter. I mean, 109 is what they ask, and that's what we're going to pay. So, the 28, I mean, they're saying it's some kind of government kickback.
Yeah, so, so all these companies have government fi- financing, where the state approves, you know, so, so the companies send up essentially a bid to the state.
Yeah.
And then the government cost is created off of that, so.
I'd just like to add a comment too. We've got a lot of friends who own farms and larger machinery like that. The cost of that machinery has gone through the roof in the last five years, and even finding parts is such an issue. So, I think maybe a relevant take into account, let's try to fix something and fix something, maybe we go get parts, maybe we can't use it, maybe it's sitting out and.
Good to go. Okay, any more discussion? Did we answer what you had?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure the amount that you had.
Okay.
State it was correct, that's all.
Um, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Uh, that'd be a no for me. Don't get messed up over that. It's okay, I'm a big boy, I can handle it. But I'm going to be a no on that, okay?
President?
Yeah.
May I be excused? I have a family affair.
Yeah.
Same place Jessica went.
Oh, yeah.
So, sorry I didn't mention that, sorry.
No, no, cool. Yep, that's fine. And you don't have to ask her, just, just tell us. You're elected. I'm, I'm not really actually in charge. Ask Keith, he told me all my duties. That's, that's not one of my duties.
May I be excused?
No. All right, good. Thank you. Uh, okay, done, done, done. Fifty, fifty-one, beverage service agreement. You want to recuse yourself of that one? You've told enough? Yep, we have four. Steve Gronin is, why can't I think of the word? Recusing himself because he's got some. He's fallen in the. Yep, okay. All right, beverage service agreement, Sean?
Uh, so, our current beverage service agreement with the Aquatic Center is with Wisconsin Beverage. It actually expired last year, last March, but under the terms of the agreement, it could automatically renew per, for one year. Automatically if either party has an issue with it, or, you know, sends writing, written notice within 60 days. So, I was contacted by Wisconsin, and they would like to, again, extend a, it to a three-year agreement. It could automatically renew it again this year, but they would like to go with a three-year agreement. There's some items in there that they wanted to change, so you'll see the current copy of the agreement and then a new copy. So, just with the changes in general of what has happened in 2021, 2020, they stopped pretty much with their business, they stopped doing live, providing live radio remotes. Something that they don't participate in doing anymore, they're steering away from it. So, they want to remove that. They want to increase what they supply some merchandise from 400 to 500. Instead of providing a rebate check for all the bagged box products that are purchased, they want to just reflect on invoice instead of, obviously, it's easier to show that they get deduction.
You'll get the deduction on the immediate.
On the invoice, yeah.
They won't have to do a whole nother step.
Right, right.
Yeah, it makes sense.
And then extend the agreement, so. Even like last year, due to the terms of the agreement with the live remote, we had discussed with them, and instead of doing that, they actually provided us with 10 life jackets that we could loan out to patrons of the Aquatic Center. So, we have, we had an amount of life jackets there, but, I mean, we were using so many last year, I don't know if it's, because people didn't swim in 2020, or didn't take swim lessons. There was a plethora of people that couldn't swim and didn't have life jackets, so. It was a need, you know, I talked to the Y, because they provide our staffing, and they're like, well, we need 10 of this size and send it to our rep, and he talked to his boss, and he's like, yeah, no problem. They're like, that was great, we would love to do stuff like that again. They're not logoed, no.
I mean, could we get 30 if they logoed? I mean, there's, there's another thought, so the live remote, I mean, that's, that's a pretty heavy, you know, you've got bodies there and the whole bit. And, and sometimes signage is bigger. I mean, I, I kind of hear the marketing on both, you know, Coke and Pepsi. And, you know, I know Coke says that every, every time you're outside of your house, they want you to see the Coke emblem somewhere. And that's why sometimes you'll drive down Grand Avenue, you'll see a vending machine there that you don't like, never gets used. It doesn't matter. They just want you to see that repetitive Coca-Cola all the time. But maybe sometimes.
And, yeah, and they do.
Some kind of signage.
They do do Pepsi logoed umbrellas that are used for the lifeguards, all the signage for the concessions, for the the prices and stuff. And then also, we're required to use for the agreement, you know, Pepsi logoed cups. Or.
But we have to.
Or plain ones, yes.
But that's fine, yeah.
So, and as I stated in my RFC, the live remotes unfortunately weren't, it was a bonus for us, but it wasn't really the driver of getting people to the facility that we thought it would be. And we've done it for years and years, but it was great for the people that were there, but it never really, say, brought people in just because it hurt down the range. Most of the time, it was a surprise that there was a live remote that day.
I don't want to elongate the meeting, but, okay, so if you're working with them, and you have, you know, you have your themed days or holidays or whatever, I mean, you know, do you have some themed days throughout the summer? You know, what if you called 10 of them Pepsi Day or Mountain Dew Day, and then they offered a small, you know, everybody gets.
We, we used to do things like that for tea night, you know, during Weston Fest, we had free swim. Pepsi always provided free product for that. I mean, tea night was usually, I think, maybe one five-gallon bib, where, and then they'd give set shopper like the eight-ounce cups. And a lot of times, they would have extra leftover and be able to use it, you know, even beyond that. So, but right now, we don't have, since 2020, and taking on the management with the YMCA, you know, and now staffing issues, we haven't brought back anything, with the exception of, you know, we're doing swim lessons, because that's a huge safety thing, we're going to promote swim lessons, and we're pushing those. But we haven't gone anywhere else with additional events at this time.
What's your pleasure?
They giving us any incentive to go from a one-year to a three-year?
Uh, really, it's just obviously stability these days for them. Their, their, our incentive really is we're only gaining, you know, additional $100 in merchandise, but they have spread out what they're offering us. So, like, if we need something for the facility, we can request it, and they'll consider it.
Yeah.
So, it's not just $400 of Pepsi merchandise, because there used to be t-shirts, umbrellas, anything that was Pepsi logoed, and it was usually done, used during the live remote as giveaways.
Right. So, it, it is shrinking away. And then at 400 to 500, there's the dating ain't that tight, that that's not going to be an issue. You don't have shrink. You're not going to incur any shrink with another, you know, 25% more product, right? From 400 to 500, they just want to have their drops a little bit bigger, right?
Yeah, they just, they just want to give us a little bit more funding.
Yeah.
From 400 to 500, it's actually going up.
Yeah. I thought, I thought it was a drop.
No, it's going up.
That's, that's my language of how much I get the drop at your store.
Right, so like they said, they, they, they thought it was, so, they, they actually liked doing like the life jackets more than just giving us Pepsi merchandise.
So, I, I thought it was just they wanted to sell you 500 instead of 400.
No, they give us all the merchandise, so, for free.
There for a second, I thought in my reading.
Well, no, we, we can't stop our trucks unless we get a thousand bucks, so.
Oh, they, I mean, yeah, they've been a great partner with us. You know, I stayed in there, we've, we've used another supplier in the past and.
It's a local family and, and versus corporate, and also, I mean, Mountain Dew is the bomb. I mean, you can, you can do whatever you want, but boy, a Mountain Dew drinker knows, a Mountain Dew versus Mellow Yellow.
I mean.
I'm a Diet Coke guy, and I know the difference, but in this area, it is Pepsi.
And there, there is a minimal amount we have to sell.
Yeah.
For them to deliver to us, but we've never even had to discuss it, because we've never had a problem covering it.
Okay.
I just talked to them about Wassa's deal, so Wassa's three pools do not meet their minimum for the summer. So, they actually order it all to one site, it's all delivered to one site, and park personnel move it from to the other two sites.
Oh, they're saving themselves the labor, yeah.
So.
Can you bring your own in? I'm a kid, I'm coming, can I bring six cans of Pepsi?
No.
But how do you serve it? Loose or in?
We have bottle machines and we have phone service.
I could sneak it in. I could sneak in your bottle, right?
If it's a water bottle, if it's a water bottle, that's the only thing we allow brought in.
All right. What's your pleasure? We have enough? Yeah.
I'll move to approve extending the current beverage service agreement with Mid-Wisconsin Beverage, with proposed change, three-year agreement.
Second.
Uh, motion by Hardinger, second by Feeny. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Reward system due to vandalism. Uh, note that Gronin is backing.
So, this item was actually discussed during, in the Public Works, the joint Public Works Park meeting last week, which actually, we didn't have form for parks, so it was, you know, I included on the agenda, even though it was, it was just preliminary discussion. They're throwing out some ideas on, you know, because I was pretty heavy on the report on the vandalism, because it just happened that weekend, and it was Monday that we had a meeting, so we reported regarding the vandalism. There is some news, though, as far as, I mean, I've been working with Ever Special pretty much all week last week, and then the community resource officer at Silver. So, the idea from Ever Special was that utilize like the Quick 50, which is within the school system. So, you can do an anonymous tip and you get 50 bucks. But to do that, in order to do that, it has to be part of Crime Stoppers. So, I submitted like the cost for the damage and repairs to the CRO, which is needed for Crime Stoppers. So, he's working on that right now. So, there is some stuff in motion as far as that. And then also, obviously, some of the estimates for the repairs as part of, you know, the reporting for them, because if they do catch somebody, then it could be, I mean, restitution, possibly, stuff like that, so they need to estimate with costs. Yeah, but I think some of the discussion, and Michael could correct me, and anybody else that was at the meeting, it was just, you know, what, what direction do we want to go? I mean, do we want to go and put additional cameras out there? There's a lot better technology out there than what we previously had used. You know, one of the recommendations was, you know, I mean, there's people that hunt right now, and they have a dozen Bartos cameras, and they're connected to their cell phone plan, you know? You know, is that a viable option? It gives us a little more flexibility than moving to an old trail cam around, because, you know, they'll hit that facility that one night, and it could sit there the rest of the summer, and they may not hit it ever again. You know, is, is that an option? Or, you know, is there another way to incentivize people to report it, you know, even using social media, and I know Ever Special's pretty active on their social media? Just, you know, or even the village stating, you know, your park restrooms are closed tonight due to excessive vandalism. People have bought in and enjoy the parks and love the amenities, they don't want to lose them, so they may be more inclined to report something they see if, you know, Kellyland Park is, you know, the head of the dog park, one of the busiest year-round parks we have. And, you know, anytime there's mention of us closing the dog park, even for mowing, we get phone calls about it. It has to be mowed, you know? So, I mean, I think people would, you know, maybe, maybe we should be more active as far as letting people know why these items are not available to them. I mean, the bathrooms at Lockweiler were closed, and they had T-ball start last week for Monday and Tuesday night, that were not available due to the vandalism. So, Kellyland, fortunately, we weren't, didn't have to lock it up, damages on the exterior, but it was still, obviously, some horrible material that was placed on there that has to, has to be removed. It's not something that we can leave out there, you know? But you want, we don't want four and five-year-olds walking in a restroom facility with what was painted on those walls. So, you know, it was really just to get the discussion started and see if it's something that we should investigate more. I mean, it was more of a bring it here and see if it's something that, you know, we should be looking at, and then we take it back to, you know, Parks, Public Works.
One of the things we talked about was, sometimes if you get, offer a little cash, the people will, models will open up a little more, you know? I don't know, to me, it's kind of dumb. If I see somebody doing something, I'm going to report it, but some people have to be in a bribe to.
There are people, I mean, most people are pretty hesitant, I mean, just due to stuff that happens.
Is, is, is Crime Stoppers, we're involved in that, right?
We're taking care of it.
Yep, okay, is Crime Stoppers still anonymous if I tell? So, then like you meet me somewhere, you put an envelope somewhere, I can.
It only takes care of it through the board, that if there's a tip that is a successful arrest, they make.
Yeah, so it's got to be a.
On the amount for the award, it's also tied to the Quick 50 program at the school.
So, that's already happening.
It's already happening.
I, I think maybe if we have to do, you know, if we feel that we want to put some cameras up, I, I'm talking to Keith all the time about making sure that the fences are on our municipal center, because there's some people not happy with that, and that would be a real stinker if they.
And that, and that's a reactive thing. So, I think we need to be proactive, because I think not only is it a vandalism issue, it's a public safety issue. And that's just my thought, because these are public parks, like you said, people come in there to use the bathrooms, people might go to the shelter, some of these areas, anyway.
Yeah, I mean, the other issue that, you know, is not really part of this discussion, but, I mean, the skate park has been producing a lot more activity this year than previous years. Whatever happened with those cameras that we were supposed to dump down there like seven years ago? Well, we still have a camera there, but it's, unfortunately, it's focused right at the skate park, so, and all, everything takes place in the parking lot, or, you know, right now, they're dealing with. We don't have access to that, so. Right.
Yeah, that, that would have been my other question, Chief, is, I mean.
I don't know how much spent on that, but I, I've never used it, never seen it, and it's.
You know, we, instead of going this way to the police, the police, you're the one that's active on all these cameras, you're the one that's active on the body stuff. You're you're right on top of all that stuff.
Yeah, the only.
Going to you to get the cameras.
You'd be lighting cameras or more patrol and more patrol.
Yeah.
Happening.
Yeah.
The cheaper version is more lighting and cameras.
I mean, so you can't have a camera without lighting because.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, well, the picture you get.
Let me tell you. Let me tell you, my ring cam- my ring camera for a hundred ninety nine dollars, holy crap.
We have some pretty good cameras out there.
And then I get to talk to them too, so that's pretty bizarre. I I'm just shocked at what my 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 ring doorbell does. I I I I'm still learning new stuff, but it's I'm full color, very, very clear. I get the street, everything. I I want to put four more doorbells on my house.
So how would what what would be the best way to go forward to? Because we're not, we're we're talking possibly lighting, cameras.
Locks, yeah.
We're talking a couple of different proposals.
The skate park camera needs to be operational and it needs to be something based. And it definitely definitely needs to be upgraded. Or the officers, it needs to be web-based, so the officers that go there can review the camera on their computer. That just makes too much sense. Now you've been there for years.
If it could just go right into your system.
Right.
I I I'm gonna tell you, locking that bathroom, I I can't imagine going into a a a a at-night bathroom in a park. I mean, there's quick trips everywhere. I mean, my God, can you imagine if somebody's in that bathroom and then you start hearing motion outside? It scared a little bit hell out of me to come outside after using the restroom. So I don't think there's any reason it should be open. I mean, I think we should lock those things up. I mean, my God.
Was it what time?
What?
Haven't been allowed to.
Sundown, isn't it?
Yeah.
Is it sundown?
Eleven.
Ten or eleven. Eleven.
Yeah, oh, wow. Oh.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah.
Hours just changed a few years ago. It was six to eleven and then it was expanded to earlier mornings to five to eleven. Um, skate parks dust or dawn to dusk.
Okay.
Which.
I I you might want to.
Other people there or not at skate park.
At Park and Rec, you might want to just talk about hours. I mean, maybe it's ten o'clock. And is Dino Corvino and does he know about the vandalism? Because he is wildly passionate about our parks, especially the dog park.
Especially the skate park.
Yeah, and that both. It's the dog and the park. Yeah, I know. I know he he's got a a big thing in that, but he he's very passionate about those two.
To me, I think, wait, wouldn't you be the person that we would want to talk to about what kind of cameras or what we want? Because, I mean, I can say a camera and.
Right now, we have two different platforms already at the safety building. Um, one's through our county and then one's through a different vendor with the new construction, but that new vendor is expensive. I mean, they're all expensive.
Yeah.
We've got six, nine months waiting on cameras, like you mentioned, for parts on anything you can't get. I like to keep a one platform. I mean, there's school cameras, there's um, two different cameras in our building. Um, we've got squad cameras and body cameras and cameras, cameras, software, software and ninety percent of the time. None of it works as it's supposed to. Um.
Okay.
But yeah, it's its help and that's the way everything's going. I like to see traffic cams on Camp Phillips and scope of that.
On which ones?
On all our major intersections. Camp Phillips is one of our biggest crash intersections.
But would it be sense to kind of have Sean kind of talk and find out and then come to the park department? With some kind of idea, but I think one of the things we need to, if we don't do cameras, do locks. I mean, I, you know.
But let's just use the PMPD as a resource. Scotty Taitrol is he, he's all excited about all that stuff too, isn't he?
Yeah, I think we might involve probably Nate.
Yeah, Nate too.
Sure, to be coordinated. This ties into the whole discussion we had about the locks. Maybe it's a something we consider for an ARPA. I guess one thing though, might one of my takeaways from the park and all the works meeting though is do we, did we want to somehow? Offer some reward money in these cases. And I don't know where we get the money from, if that if that's what we want to do. I think that's, I think it's much. Much better suggestion to have better technology, I guess, to be able to catch somebody probably than.
My personal opinion is Crime Stoppers is such a well-known thing. It has been successful in the past.
Yeah.
It'll be up and running.
Okay.
You know, soon.
So is that fifty dollars? Is that a good one? Or can you change your reward sometime?
Fifty dollars is a Quick Fifty program for this school. So their committee, once it's through Crime Stop- Stoppers will approve that.
Yep.
That money. Um, Crime Stoppers is a different reward system that they're more determined based on.
That's what I thought. I was on that board once. Yeah, okay.
And it's based and most of the funds are donated.
Yep.
Uh, but you you could put your own funds towards it, the way I understand. I did some, I did some reading on it too, you know? Um, just because I knew you guys were doing this, you know, and I'm like, well, I should be looking at this and. Familiar familiarize myself with it, you know, because it is, it's nationwide. It's just, you know, and there's so many. So many uh, departments involved in Wisconsin. They have a whole list of.
Yeah.
You know?
But you're right, the directors on there are, I mean, there's no, they didn't choose me. They chose where I worked because we would fund it, so.
My guess, my question is on those locks, how do we go forward with that? I mean, price-wise, find out and will the park be needed next month or not?
Well, we could on that, I mean.
Well, we're, I mean, it's a joint meeting now, so I mean.
It's gonna always be listed.
Yeah, it'll be listed. We just need to make sure we have forum if we want the park committee to discuss it, but it'll be a joint discussion. Um, sure, the prices have changed since the last quotes, but I do have quotes from.
What can you get?
I two years ago, but I would I would request her.
Yeah, okay. Well, let's move back on the reward here for fifty two. Um, what else are we talking about here in the reward? So we're just.
I think I think with what they currently have going, I don't think we have to do anything additional at this point.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yeah, with Crime Stoppers taken care of.
So good to go, okay. All right. Yeah. And um.
I would just say cameras.
Yeah.
And locks if you before the next park meeting.
Yeah, we won't be able to do anything at this point, but I mean, we can certainly up till.
Tell tell Sean, I think it's RMM Solutions did our door locks and our cameras and the both web-based, so we can program them, change them remotely. It'd be nice to have that same. They're they're expensive, but. Everybody.
So you got those art funds or whatever you want to call it.
Okay. Fifty two is just going to uh, more future stuff, okay? Um, ju- I just want to, um, I've talked to both chiefs in the last couple of months. And uh, I don't know if we have to agenda some agenda this, but each of them have, you know, very, very capable and, you know, to come to these meetings. Um, I I know we all come to these monthly, but you know, I know you got a lot of different things both of you do. And uh, is it okay? And you you send, you know, Eric or you send John or Nick. But I mean, is it something that we would want to entertain that you would rotate that? Would would you guys feel comfortable with that? To um, you know, just so that they they feel a little bit more comfortable, you know, here? I mean, I I think I think they all actually all do a great job. Maybe I should just shut up. And uh, because you asked, we don't have to do any of this. I mean, you guys can decide when you want to come or not, so. And uh, but I I just feel funny. I mean, so like Jamie asked for my permission to leave, you know? You you guys don't have to ask for permission not to be here, you know, so that's just right, tell me why. And you know, but I I mean that and I uh, you know, I mean, I think it's nice to have representatives, but there's, you 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 each have good, good people that work with you, so.
I mean, like with Jamie asked, well, it would be, I need to be excused, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know too. I I didn't know. I didn't know if it was that way. I mean, obviously for the elected officials. But um, you know, somebody's going, somebody's going on vacation.
You said yes or no.
My staff doesn't ask for permission. They just they're on vacation or they're they have an issue or they have a a school thing, you know, so.
But it's white.
Huh? Yeah.
White.
I'm at that point, yeah.
I mean, if I just got up and walked out of the room.
Well, no, I I mean not be here at not be here at all, you know, so. So I'm just throwing it out there.
I guess I feel it's my job to be at this meeting in the town board. Um, Eric is gonna attend the town of Weston meetings. Um, and then obviously he'll fill in either here at the town, um, over at Mountain, if I'm, you know, on vacation or at a town or whatever it may be, but. Other than that, I mean, I will probably continue to come to the best.
Oh, that I I would rather have that. I just, I kind of want to just throw it out there, so quit smirking at me, so, yeah, okay, anyway. All right, enough of that. Uh, boy, I'll tell you, we were really, really close there, Matt. And it was almost perfect timing when you came in here and then we got off on a tangent. So attorney referrals, any attorney referrals? Hearing none? Uh, we move into closed session per nineteen point eight five parent one, parent E. Deliberating deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds. Or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Roll call, right?
You got a motion?
Yeah, uh, motion, there you go.
Mister President, I move to enter closed session per nineteen uh, nineteen eighty-five parent one, parent E. Uh, specifically consideration of site development grants by From the Forests Memorandum of Understanding for. Right of Entry to Property on Trosser Lane for Livestation Construction and Proposed Amendment to Terms of Purchase and Development Agreement for Tommy Ducks.
Second. Second by Hermeling? Uh, roll call.
All right, Maloney.
Yes.
Hermeling.
Aye.
Gronin.
Aye.
Feeny.
Aye.
Hardinger.
Aye.
New Orleans, Gummy.
I'm gonna use the restroom real quick.
Yep. Quick body break?
Yeah, it's warm up for her.
What can you, a plug?